Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. There are a few budget amendments that have been requested. Two of them were actually just corrections of data entry errors from the budgeting process. The first one of those being records archival. Mary pointed out that I put the amount for archival services on the wrong line. So that's $100,000 to go from 431 to 409 to 43409. And Judge Messina pointed out that I put the $850 of books and publications on his line for bonds. Those are merely technical corrections that I would ask you to approve. Mary said that in the archival services, there is an opportunity to provide training with those funds, and she has asked that $1,500 of that be designated as available for specific training in that program. Constable Jordan has asked that we move $100 out of supplies into his line for bonds to allow for sufficient bonds to cover his bond renewal. Those are the budget amendments I would recommend for your approval and ask that you approve those.
Will we approve the budget amendment?
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Hetherton, seconded by Commissioner Rome to approve the budget line item amendments for October 16, 2012. Is there any further discussion? Is it all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Payment of bills.
Judge and Commissioners, the bills come to a total of $599,688.64. They are listed on your schedule. I have provided a payment warrant for each one. Some of the larger items, to Aperis Inc., $17,369, that's for the Vine Grant. We have to pay that in advance, and once we have qualified, the Attorney General reimburses that at a later time. There is $25,719.26 due to Ben E. Keith for groceries in the jail. To the City of Granbury, $38,346.69 for utilities. A transfer to the Inigent Defense Fund, 112, that is an accounting transfer, $39,240.80. To Ergon Asphalt and Emulsions, $14,484.76 for road ops materials. To the Hood County Committee on Aging, $18,750 for a quarterly subsidy. And to the Granbury-Hood Economic Development Corporation, $25,000 for a quarterly subsidy. To MGM Landscape Services, $27,708.80 for contract mowing in the right of way. To the Texas Association of Counties, this will be for property and casualty insurance premiums, $181,017. To U.S. Bank, Voyager Fleet Services, this is for fuel card purchases, $37,528. I would also like to point out that the expenditure for a scanner in the county attorney's office is included in these numbers, and that would take care of the last item on your agenda, item nine, if you'd like to approve that now. That may set aside the need for any further comment on that. I'll leave that up to your discretion. But I would ask that you approve these bills for $599,688.64 for payment.
Move it right up, paying the bills.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Hetherton, seconded by Commissioner Simpson. Do you want to include that item nine in that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And that we'll include item nine, which is the purchase of scanners for the county attorney's office. So any further discussion on this? Is it all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Miscellaneous, consider and take appropriate action regarding the regional public defendant capital cases. This item was on September 25, court minutes. A motion was made by Commissioner Berry to approve continuing on with this plan for capital murder cases based on the district attorney or the judge requesting a rate review, and we've done that. And basically, what that means is, is that our rate is based off of the number of capital cases that you file, not necessarily the capital cases that you actually have. You know, you may start off, you may be charged in a capital case, and then later on, they may flee or something, and it be reduced down. Well, it still counts against you if you had a capital case that was filed, not necessarily prosecuted. And so we got that straightened out, and so I would like to, I'll entertain a motion to approve that we do this first year as free, and then if we charge, a rate that escalates. Our motion made by Commissioner Rome, seconded by Commissioner Hetherton to approve this. Is there any further discussion? Then all in...
Will we get periodic reports on the use?
Yes, yes, we will. Is any other comments or questions? Is it all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Discuss and take appropriate action on the release of ADR funds used in some, for family protective services and ADR training and recruiting of CASAs. We previously have collected this money, and it's not available for dispersment because it was not set up at the time, and the fund is now set up correctly. We have an Attorney General's ruling that says, states that any money collected that previously can be used at the county's discretion, and we don't have to send it back. We thought maybe we were going to have to do that. So the money collected is now $15 for each civil case that are filed in Hood County. The money has been collected at the offices of the county clerk and district clerk over a period of years. The alternate dispute resolution is a general term to include the mediation, arbitration, case evaluation, moderation, settlement, conference, and collaborative problem solving, et cetera. They all serve, you know, as part of this alternative resolution dispute system, as opposed to the traditional method of having a trial. It's just a cheaper way. Mission Granbury Executive April Mitchell submitted a proposal to spend these designated funds. April, would you like to come forward, please, this time?
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners.
Morning. Do you have something to pass out to us?
I sure do.
I believe you sent it earlier, but if you got it again, we'll take it.
Thank you so much. This is the same thing that I sent to you.
Okay.
[inaudible]
Go ahead.
We would just like to say we appreciate your consideration for utilization of these funds. Our primary purposes for the ADRS funds, which by statute in its Civil Practice and Remedies Code 152, 4.002, states that they want to give special consideration to family and specifically parent-child relationships. Other CASAs have utilized these funds to train new CASAs, educate the community on these funds, and we would like to do that as well. The other purpose that we would like you to consider is for the Family Protection Fund. We have the Ada Carry Center in Hood County, and we saw about 545 families last year, and we would ask your consideration to use those funds to continue to provide safety, education to the community, assessments, as well as just oversight of these families, and help them to bridge the gap to a newer and better life. We provide direct services as well as indirect services. Direct services including intake assessments, analyzing their family situations, and then intervening according to what their need is. We have about 18 full-time employees at this time, all of which are directly or indirectly involved in servicing these clients. We have a supportive service division called Emergency Assistance Network, in which we provide financial needs and clothing and so forth for the clients, because often when they're taken out of their family situation, albeit the children that have been taken in CPS custody, or the children and the often primarily mothers that have been taken away from their home environment, don't have basic needs, and so we utilize the Emergency Assistance Network for that. So that is what we would like to do with these funds, is to just provide oversight, maybe be able to help train more CASAs. Currently, we have about 136 children in the CASA program. We have about 10 on the waiting list. We have 39 active CASAs. They have approximately four to six children, and when you consider kind of the comprehensive things that they do with these kids, where they are part of the court system, they get to know the child personally, they also get to know the family that they've been taken from, they get to know the foster family, and they go into the court proceedings and they testify on behalf of the child. The reason why that's so significant is that often CPS caseworkers have approximately 40 to 60 cases, and it's very taxing because these are not, these are very complex cases, and so the CASA assists the state as well as the county in advocating for these children's needs. The shelter obviously provides safety for a time, and our goal is to help the families be self-sustaining. The approximate amount of time they're in the shelter is about four to six weeks, and we are implementing programming with local churches and other community organizations to help them have heat jobs ready and have housing and so forth. So I thought I would just open it up and see if you have any questions specific.
There is a couple of things that, one of the things that I was just going over is, is that there's one piece of this that we haven't done yet, and that we need to do this before we can start anything. I went to Toner this morning and got copies of the book, you know, the Texas Civil Practice and Remedies Code, and there's a couple of things. One is, the management of this will have to be done by a committee selected by the County Bar Association. So we need to get that set up before we can really act on this. And the other part of this is, it says, in 152, 004, section C, says the fund shall be administered by the Commissioners' Court and may only be used to establish and maintain the system. And I'm not, you know, I need some further kind of clarification on that from, I know you had an attorney talk, but how do we get around, it can only be used for the, to establish and maintain the system when, to do training? I don't...
Well, you mean the oversight? Are you talking specifically about the oversight of the funding, Judge?
When it says the fund shall be administered by the Commissioners' Court and may only be used to establish and maintain the ADRS system.
I think the point here is that these funds, obviously because of their multiple uses, are very easy to lose track of.
Yes, sir.
We are responsible for being able to report back to the taxpayer what specifically they were used for.
Yes.
Not questioning how you use them, but simply questioning having a system that will allow us to answer those questions, both legally and morally.
I think the ADR system is great, and I really wanted to, but we got to do this one little piece before we can ever do anything else.
Yes, sir.
And I just read that this morning, and I went down and got the law again. Toner previously had given it to me, but I had misplaced it somewhere. So I went down and got it this morning. So I want to ask the Commissioners if they were able to table this this morning till we can get the vesting of the, we can get the bar association set it up, and then, you know, then they will be doing the management of it. So we need to work through the attorneys.
The other concern I had is, we are in the process of setting this up, committing future courts. So we have to have a system that will make that transition of reporting and accountability smooth.
Yes, sir.
Beginning, in fact, in January. We're going to have two new members who will never have seen this before, and the question's going to come up, how is this money being used?
Sure. I mean, very good questions, and Judge and I, I had sent information to you about, from the Texas Association of Counties and the legal counselor there. She was very helpful, so she might be, I'm sure she'd be very helpful with the bar.
Well, she's the track to the bar association.
Yes.
Yeah.
I mean, she really sent a lot of very good information.
Can we table this with a schedule that will push people to do this thing, so we can act on it soon, because it's not something, because of the use of funds, that need to be delayed or...
When we table it and bring it back, when? And what's your motion?
How quickly do we do it? I would say we table it and table it for reserve and a decision at the next meeting, if that's possible.
Okay. I will do everything I can, and I will be in touch with your office.
Okay.
Do you like to be in touch with your office and see what you need, sir?
You know any?
Toner, you have something?
Well, you might want to check when the next bar association meeting is, because they have to be a part of it, so...
That's Thursday.
Their bar association meeting. I think it'll be on the agenda by then.
I hope they have it on the agenda or not, but we can sure contact them and see. But once we get all these little pieces put together, we'll put it on the very next meeting, according to Commissioner Rome's, yeah, his motion.
His motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll say.
There was a motion made to table this until we can get all parties together on this, the bar association, and put it on the very next meeting after that made by Rome, seconded by Simpson. Any further discussion?
Okay.
No, thank you.
Thank you, April.
Appreciate it.
Are they all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you very much. Discuss and take appropriate action on the purchase of constable vehicles, equipment, and uniforms. Who's handling this? You guys?
Wherever you'd like to.
All right.
Thank you. Do you have any questions on the amendment that was presented?
The only thing that I can say is that graphics on these black cars, that's out for the officer, because you can't, you can't see them. Get you a gold deal, put it on the side of the constable or something, but all this graphic you put on a black car don't show up. I wouldn't think that they would need to do that. I thought the cars were white. Mr. Berry thought the cars were white when we were doing this, but black cars and graphics don't work very well together. So you just put stuff on there, it don't show. So that's the only, that's all that I've got. The rest of it...
Well, I think it was very good that you got the inventory and cut some of the stuff down. You have your, right there in front of you, the, you know, how much, what are we looking at now? Is it a total of $31,000?
$31,749.
$31,749.
And $31,500.
Now, what does, what all does that include? I know you sent out those booklets, but I don't have it in front of me. Can you kind, let's just go over that a little bit.
Commissioners, Judge, that includes the vehicle as far as all the radios.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead. It's in my packet, but go ahead.
That includes equipping the vehicles, the lights, the radios, the cages, push bumpers, computer in the car, the mounts, the wiring, everything it takes to wire that vehicle. You have to also remember, we don't have vehicles that we can exchange, like the sheriff's department can, the lights and the radios, so everything's going to be new in that, in that vehicle, so that's why the price is a little high. The price, approximately 35% to 40% is computer, two car radios, and a handheld radios.
Is that $18,000 from those, that includes the installation and like all the lights and everything, and...
Yes. That's everything that goes inside that vehicle and installed on that vehicle, from the bumper to everywhere.
When you guys were saying it was on the light bars too, you decided we didn't need the fancier ones, and so they did cut them down.
Well, they did cut that. They also did an inventory and found some weapons.
Second issue, part of this is that some of this should have been included in place of line item budget, uniforms and standing up a new office or that sort of thing. And we brought this, brought our attention very, very late in the budget process, and we opted to go ahead and go this manner with the budget.
Leave it in detail.
One, I'd like to address, one issue was the markings, they need to be marked in some manner if they're going to run exempt plates for state law. So we were left to mark them in some manner. If they're going to be emergency vehicles, they're going to operate, they're just like that.
I understand that. If you go put this graphic on a black car, it just don't show up at all.
No, but they're there to comply with the law in the next day.
Can you have a, like a, if it's a black car, can you have a white thing that says...
Yes, sir, there's the constable. In the graphics package, there, it's reflective graphics, so it's also a safety feature on the vehicle when it's stopped or pulled over.
That's part of the required law.
Yes, sir, safety. Better reflect.
I guess, you know, my thing is, like you said a while ago, the sheriff swaps out the gear from car to car, and it just was a little bit of shock. You could spend $25,000 on a car, and then $31,000 to, or $18,000 to get it, and then another, but totaling $31,000 plus $25,000, it was just like a little...
It was to me also as an taxpayer, but doing all the research, that's unfortunate, that's what it takes.
Yeah, I know.
It was a shock turning it in. But as far as the graphics, using the term graphics can kind of be a misnomer. It pretty much just means putting constable down the side of the car, putting the, in Hood County, identifying it as a constable vehicle, as an emergency vehicle, and the precinct markings and the unit number. And gold is a color on it that does show in contrast.
I think, I think you made the constable, what precinct you're in, I think that's really necessary, so...
Well, as Mike said, there's a charted list of things that go along with the law because of running exempt plates and all that stuff, because otherwise if that car stopped someplace and it isn't marked properly, if it was in place, somebody hits it, there's different liabilities.
Well, I'll entertain a motion to approve this.
Go ahead.
Motion made by Commissioner Simpson and seconded by Commissioner Rome. Any further discussion?
155.
This, 155, right, okay, so I have a motion made by Commissioner Simpson, seconded by Commissioner Rome, to take appropriate action on purchasing the constable vehicle, equipment, and uniforms out of 155. Is there any further discussion? Is it all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Question. Is there any, any legal problem or legal clarities regarding using your own weapon? Want to be marked, you're going to use your own weapon?
No, sir.
Far as tea close and standing, as long as you're qualified as in standard military law.
All right, we have to discuss and take appropriate action to cast votes. Thank you all very much on the two members of the Hood County Appraisal District. Y'all have that in your packets? We need to vote on two members. Okay, so...
I don't have enough finger with your fingers.
I thought that was good.
It's a trick.
Make everybody look the sign, so we'll not have to give those who have. Yeah, go ahead. One for Cullen and one for Nan Hewlett. Okay, we have four for, looks like the top two vote getters are Cullen and Nan Hewlett. So that will be the two new representatives that the county has passed, and I think this, we only have one vote for each, so I don't know how this is going to go when it gets to the other county's authority. That's our...
City Council.
Yeah, that's our vote. We'll keep this. All right, the next item is, consider, take appropriate action for the, wait a minute, let me, let's back up a minute. Do I have a motion to accept these votes?
Second.
Have motion made by Commissioner Simpson, seconded by Commissioner Rome, to accept the vote of the, for the Hood County Appraisal District by the Hood County Commissioners' Court. Any further discussion? And... The most, all in favor? The motion carried. Consider and take appropriate action to authorize county judges to sign a community response training program in a local agreement with the City of Granbury. And this is what it is, community response training program in a local agreement, maintenance, entered into between the City of Granbury, which is a home rule corporation chartered in the county, and it's for police departments, fire, and so forth. Sheriff, you want to come forward and talk about that?
Judge, Commissioners, I have not seen that agreement, but I helped get the original team started with the Citizen Police Academy alumni group from the City of Granbury, and most everybody that's been involved in that has lived out in the county. They're eager volunteers that want to be able to help, so if we can continue this program out in the county, this would be a great thing. My job and Brian's job is plan for the worst but hopefully the best, and in times of disaster with floods, fires, windstorms, whatever, the fire EMS, law enforcement get tapped out from the grid with all the, all the things that have to be done, so it sure would be fantastic if we could rely on this team to continue the training, continue the involvement of everybody, try to get more involvement into this program and be able to just help in Hood County's time of need. So, like I said, I didn't, I have been involved in that particular agreement, but Brian wasn't here, so I just wanted to show my support for this, and hope that we can continue it at the county level. Based on that, I believe the motion that we authorize county judges to sign this will be, once it's been blessed, if you will, by the county attorney and all the law enforcement.
All right, I have motion made by Commissioner Rome, accepted by Commissioner Simpson to approve that county judge, authorize county judge to sign this document for the community response training in a local agreement with the City of Granbury based on the county attorney approval. Is any further discussion? And all in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Consider and take appropriate action to purchase a replacement scanner for the county auditors' and district clerks' offices for the RVI imaging update.
Judge, Commissioners, several of the scanners that we, that are in place right now will not move forward with the technology that they've been using for a number of years, and it's really, it's time for replacement. What we've done, from my team's perspective, is try to make sure that whatever scanners that we are purchasing can be used with either system that we are using in an office. So we try to make sure that whether we're using a Net Data System or a Tyler System in one office, that these scanners will work with either one of those. In looking and auditing all the scanners, we had found three that have to be replaced. One is the auditor's office, two are in the district clerk's office. One of those is a high-volume scanner, which is the reason for the difference in cost. The scanners that we have looked at right now are all Fujitsu scanners. We're proposing a quantity of two of one model that run one thousand four hundred and ten dollars each, and a quantity one of the higher-volume scanner that is four thousand five hundred and seventy dollars. We validated these and make sure that they work with the systems that are coming in place, and this is our proposal to our foundation from my team, as well as the companies that we checked with.
Or is there anybody?
Any questions?
Yeah, y'all have questions for Jackie?
What fund is it?
Fifty-five?
Fifty-five.
All of these would have to come out of fund fifty-five along with all of the other expenditures that were authorized for the RVI system conversion.
These scanners could be used if we changed systems to, they could be used.
That was one of the things, we tried to make sure, wait long enough that we can verify with both vendors that we can use the same scanner, and most of our scanners now that we have in place can be used in different, in different software packages, so that's what we wanted to make absolutely sure of before we went forward and recommended a scanner.
Well, I know that the old system was no longer supported, so we had to do something.
We have to go.
Otherwise, we were going to be left out, Nicole. All right, I have a motion to authorize the purchase of these two scanners, one for forty-five seventy, and two are for a unit price of one thousand four hundred and ten dollars.
The total of seventy-three, Judge? Seven thousand three hundred and nine?
Okay. So... Motion made by Commissioner Rome, accepted by Commissioner Simpson. Is any further discussion on this item? Then all in favor? Opposed? The motion carried. Consider and take appropriate action to approve purchase of a new male car from fund fifty-five. Yes, ma'am?
Good morning, judging, Commissioners. I'd like to give you a little background on this. When I first came to the county in two thousand eight, we had a panel van. It had no side or back windows. There were always issues with that for backing. In fact, Rick would drive around till he didn't have to back it up. I tried to go about finding windows for whatever to be installed to try and remedy the problem of backing up. In the meantime, I had a call from a commissioner that asked me if I would trade with the sheriff's office for a Taurus. The sheriff's office really had a need for the van, and it was a little bit of overkill for my department, so I agreed to that. And we've had the Taurus every since. Well, I now have a totally female staff that runs the male room. All of us fill in whenever the male room person is out, and the lifting that we have to do of these heavy boxes of mail and stuff out of a Taurus, which is very low to the ground, has created some safety issues or health issues, however you want to classify it, and that's one reason I'm asking for the car. This Taurus is getting older, and we are beginning to have some problems with it, but I think a sport utility, very small, I had priced the, and selected the least expensive one that I could, so I would like to ask for those reasons for a different car.
I think also that we've discussed that the county, that Taurus could go back as a pool car and could be used. I mean, it's not like we're throwing it away.
Right.
So, right now, we have one pool car that's used, and at times that various elected officials have to go to Arlington or down Austin or wherever, and then appointed officials are going in a different direction, so there's, you know, somebody's going to have, it's cheaper to do that. Overall, it's cheaper to use something we already have than it is to use our personal cars, charge mileage. So I think that's, you know, we could use that car. Anybody have any?
What's the price of that?
I've looked at a two thousand thirteen Ford Escape sport utility for nineteen thousand eighty-five dollars.
It's got the lift gate in the back?
I think it does. I think all of them are equipped that way, I don't know for sure.
The one doors tend to be higher.
Yes, and I don't know. I think it will just be a matter of us sliding boxes in and out instead of lifting off the ground. And I can tell you, getting in and out of the Taurus, for some of my staff, it's not much of a challenge, they are not real tall, but when I have to do the mail, it's like a giraffe coming out of a box right. And it does a lot to my...
Leonard has the same problem with bolts.
I understand, I used to have one.
You know, we went to a meeting the other day with Clean Air, and I looked at some electric cars. I would really like to have an electric car for this, for two reasons. First of all, we would cut out the gas, but also we could take a car off the road that's pouring nitrous oxides and so forth, help us on our Clean Air, and help us with the EPA, you know, but we can't do it because they're not on the state purchase plan, so...
I think some are.
Well...
I don't know the exact extent, but I do, I was looking through there the other day at the state contracted vehicles, and there were some electric vehicles. I did not really go in and look at each one to know what they really are.
Well, I don't want to confuse the issues, so, do I have a motion, I'll entertain a motion to purchase this Ford?
Escape.
Escape for nineteen thousand eighty-five dollars. Any, is there a motion?
I think she needs to make certain that it is a lift gate in the back and not doors.
Escape does that.
Doesn't, I don't know.
Yeah, it's like an SUV.
Okay.
Yeah, I know, I know that for a fact.
So, all right, motion made by Commissioner Heavington, I have a second, accepted by Commissioner Simpson. Any further discussion on this item? And all in favor? Opposed? The motion carried. Item eight, discuss and take appropriate action regarding the procedure for leasing advertising space on the Hood County property website and under Local Government Code two sixty-three dot two five one. Kelton needs to review this item, but basically, Kelton, you want to say anything about this?
Well, the proposal that was sent to me doesn't fit. It leaves out one important factor, which is a requirement of advertising, any, you know, any kind that we're going to sell or lease space, we have to advertise and put it out for bids.
All right.
And I'm working on a proposed wording to substitute for what was submitted to this bill.
Yeah, I think we're going to have to, what I did is I wrote a procedure, sent it over to Kelton, and he said, it's ain't going to cut it, basically. So he's writing another one, and so I would suggest that we do table this the next time so that we could give, give our county attorney proper time to develop this procedure and include the advertising. Our motion made by Commissioner Simpson to table, accepted by Commissioner Heavington, all in favor? I oppose, the motion carried. Item nine was taken care of, it is now, pardon? We're working on it. It's nine forty-two, what?
You can say it.
Oh.
You can say it.
Yeah, it's a... All right, well, we're adjourned. Thank you all very much.